City Clerk, will you do the roll call?
Mr. Abraham.
Present.
Mr. Gault.
Present.
Mr. Rhodes.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mayor Kayler.
Present. We don't have anyone to do the invocation tonight. John Perkins, he's going to do it. You're asking. I need to do that at this minute. Then we don't have any.
Okay.
Commissioner Abraham has graciously agreed to do the invocation tonight. And, Commissioner Gault, would you do the pledge of allegiance?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful day. It reminds us that there is a power greater than ours. We appreciate today because yesterday was pretty uncomfortable. But not really. We live in the best place ever. Paducah is located within the best country ever. And even though we have our issues, we have our problems, we are thankful that we can come together and reason together reasonably and work our differences out. We thank you for the opportunities that you present us every day to show your character. These things we ask you, to show his name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Acting City Manager, are there any additions or deletions?
Yes, we have three introductions under ordinance, D, E, and F. One is the Kentucky Highway Safety Program Acceptance. There's two of those. And one is a waiver and consent on real property for Genova products.
Okay. Thank you. We'll go on to the minutes. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the reading of the minutes for July 22nd, 2014, and August 5th, 2014, City Commission Meeting be waived and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the City Clerk be approved as written.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Under appointments, we are subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners. I hereby appoint Carla Berry as a member of the Paducah-McCracken County Convention Center Corporation. This term will expire January 1st, 2018.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler in appointing Carla Berry as a member of the Paducah-McCracken County Convention Center Corporation.
Second.
Okay. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. I move that the Board of Commissioners appoint Mark Workman as a member of the Electric Plant Board to replace Roger Truitt, who has resigned. This term will expire February 6th, 2018.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler in appointing Mark Workman as member of the Electric Plant Board.
Need a second.
Second.
City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. And we're pleased to have both of these folks step up and agree to be on these boards. They're always very important to our community, to serve on boards that have, you know, really important decisions that have to be made to better our community. I want to thank Roger Truitt for the time that he served on the plant board. We found out after I appointed Roger that there was a statute that precluded him from being on the board. Because he serves on the Water Board, Paducah Water Board, he's considered a public official. And because of the Little TVA Act, you cannot serve on another board that you're considered a public official, like the Paducah Power Board, within two years of serving as a public official. So even if he resigned from the Water Board, I couldn't keep him on the Power Board because he would have to have been off the Water Board for two years. So it was something that apparently we didn't know about when I appointed him to that board. But I would like, and I have thanked Roger for his service. He was a great board member there. And he still serves on the Water Board. So we're glad to have Mark Workman. He's agreed to serve on the Power Board, and he'll be a good board member there. All right. Motions. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the following documents be received and filed. Documents certificates of liability insurance, Nicholas Electric LLC, United Propane Gas, right-of-way bond for David Avert DBA, Super Creek Commissioners' deeds, 605 South 8th Street, 1010 South 5th Street, 1020 Lincoln Avenue, 603 South 8th Street, 1127 Jones Street, 921 through 923 North 7th Street, 705 Finley Street. Deeds for sale of 433 through 435 North 4th Street and Martin and Crystal, to Martin and Crystal Trout. Contract for services executed by the City Manager. Paducah Timman High School, Tornado League Football. Paducah Wall-to-Wall Murals Board. Brooks Stadium Commission. Paducah Film Society, DBA Maiden Alley Cinema, National Quip Museum, Market House Theater, River Heritage Museum, DBA River Discovery Center. Contract arranged agreements. An agreement for sponsorship with Carson Falls River Center for a collaboration of music events. Agreement with Paducah Junior College, Inc. for foreclosure cost for 944 and 946 Martin Luther King Jr. Drive and 520 North 10th Street. Reimbursement agreement with Paducah Water for the Oliver Church Road Improvement Project. Memorandum of lease with McCracken County and Genova Products, Inc. for 5400 Commerce Maco Organics Corporation Project documents, 5455 Commerce Drive. Documents foreclosure for Infinity Plastic Technologies, Inc., 5400 Commerce Drive. One-year renewal agreement with Amerac Uniform Services for Engineering Public Works and Parks Department. Conditions of award for the 2014-2015 Law Enforcement Service Free Grant for DUI Enforcement by the Paducah Police Department. Paducah Water Works Financial Highlights for June 2014, City of Paducah Annual Budget Fiscal Year 2015.
Second.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
All right. I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order amending Sections A, General Government, F, Police Department, and G, Fire Department, of the 2014-2015 Position and Pay Schedule for the Full-Time Employees of the City of Paducah, Kentucky be adopted.
Second.
Did I skip one for one? I'm sorry. I'll just make you read that again, Commissioner Rhodes. Is that okay?
Sure. Practice makes perfect.
Commissioner Gault.
Upon the recommendation of the City Manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah order that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
Thanks, Cindy.
Thank you. Hi. Mayor, Commissioner, we have a lot of items for your approval tonight. We've got several new hires in several departments, and then retirement. Ken Caldwell leaves us with nine years and 10 months. He's able to retire. And my resignation is on here for tonight. After nine wonderful years, I have appreciated working here.
Well, we certainly have appreciated you, Cindy. And, you know, as I said downstairs, when we decided to combine a lot of the departments here in the city, you stepped right up and took on not only the risk management, but the HR department. And you've done an excellent job. You know, you never shy away from a challenge. And I think that's what will make you very successful in the future. And we all wish you lots of luck in your new role in life. So you'll be Professor Cindy Medford.
Eventually. A lecturer for now.
A doctor.
Eventually. That's also the plan. Yes, when life works out perfectly, that's the plan. But I certainly have appreciated the opportunity and the vote of confidence as I moved across the hall from risk management, trying on the HR wings, and have certainly enjoyed working with my peers and the support and direction of the mayor and the commission and the city manager. It's been a wonderful opportunity, and I'm going to miss everyone.
And of course Cindy's not, you know, she doesn't just work for us here at the city. She works for the community. And your initiative to start the Iron Mom run, which is so popular, I mean, how much has it grown in the last three years?
We had almost 1,000 runners this last year. And this year, we'll be handing our big check to the Family Service Society of $35,000. So over the course of the last four years, it's been over $100,000.
So now who's going to take it over?
Well, it'll be hard to get me out of that business.
Oh, good.
I'll still be plugged in. So we'll kind of have a reunion when it comes to permit time for Iron Mom. And Mark does a great job with wrangling the different departments as far as what do events need from a permitting standpoint. And certainly, I've been working with the departments to make sure that the departments have all just been all-in and onboard since day one. So it's not really been anything that I've done, just helping to coordinate their support that they've already been gracious with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Commissioner Rhodes, you get to read that again.
All right. Well, practice makes perfect. I move that municipal order entitled, a municipal order amending Sections A, General Government, F, Police Department, and G, Fire Department, of the fiscal year 2014-2015 Position and Pay Schedule for the Full-Time Employees of the City of Paducah, Kentucky be adopted.
Second.
Cindy?
This is a document that we really only need to get in front of you a few times a year. I wanted to leave it in good shape, not let it wait for more items to come up. You've just approved the most recent one at June 24th. There are only a couple of updates since then, but wanted to leave it good and clean and updated. It's updating the City Manager's hourly rate, and then updating the fire and police to catch up with the contract issue that we agreed on in the last contract negotiation.
Any questions for Cindy? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Commissioner Rhodes, I mean Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance ratifying the mayor's execution of a 2014-2015 Kentucky Governor's Highway Safety Program reimbursement grant award with the Kentucky Office of Highway Safety, a division of the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. It's all, I'm sorry.
Is that, that's on the introductions, I believe.
First page. You had that one, Paducah Water.
Hang on. Wait, wait, wait. Pardon me. I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, authorizing the mayor to execute the deed consideration certificate for the purchase of the Yancy property located at 1852 and 1853 North 8th Street, Paducah, Kentucky, by the City of Paducah acting on behalf of the Commissioners of Water Works, DBA Paducah Water be adopted.
Second.
Okay. So Paducah Water is purchasing a piece of property right past the one they own that GPS occupies right now. Any discussion? You know all about that, Alan.
Just, I hate to say they want to just buy the land that adjoins them, but once they get the land from GPS, they get that back, then that'll be a contiguous, two pieces of property that adjoins them. And there is that thing about stormwater runoff, and if you take their office building that they built, and that took water out of, or land out of stormwater runoff, and this replaces that land.
It's a trade-off.
Anyway, and it's a trade-off. And it was a, it was a well-bought piece of land, and it helps clean up 8th Street, and I think everybody kind of wins.
Okay. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the filing of a petition with the McCracken Circuit Court to terminate the Oak Grove Cemetery Perpetual Care and Maintenance Trust Fund be adopted.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, and Acting City Manager Thompson. Basically, the purpose of the municipal order that you have before you is to provide for more flexibility, less red tape, and less bureaucracy. These funds are to be used solely for the general care and maintenance and embellishment of the Oak Grove Cemetery. And tonight we have with us Rob Goff with Denon and Coiler. He's here to address any legal questions that you may have concerning this action.
It sounds like it's been very careful management of the funds.
Yes. We're required, under current law, to use the funds exclusively for the Oak Grove Cemetery. And after this action takes place, we'll still use them for the exact same thing.
Okay. All right. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. We'll go on to ordinances adoption. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
All right. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the Finance Director to pay Kentucky League of Cities for workers' compensation, liability insurance, and property insurance coverage for the City of Paducah. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby authorizes the Finance Director to pay Kentucky League of Cities in the total amount of $591,770.62 for workers' compensation, liability insurance, property insurance coverage for the City of Paducah for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2015.
Second.
Okay. Did you want to talk about this, Cindy? Or, okay. All right. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance extending the boundary of the City of Paducah, Kentucky by intent to annex certain properties lying adjacent to the corporate limits of the City of Paducah, and defining accurately the boundary of said property to be included within the said corporate limits. This ordinance is summarized as follows, approving intent to annex track of property contiguous to the present city limits located at 2711 New Heart Road containing 0.792, 0.7972 acres, more or less.
Second.
Okay. It's always good when we have voluntary annexation, and it'll be a nice addition to Paducah, to have that new bank out there.
Yes.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance establishing and approving the Upper Story Residential Grant Program and authorizing the Director of Planning to administer the program and provide financial assistance to eligible applicants for completion of income-producing residential units in historic downtown Paducah. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance hereby establishes the Upper Story Residential Grant Program for property owners who are building new residential commercial structures or rehabilitating existing structures in the historic downtown area for residential use. This program will provide financial assistance that shall not exceed 20% of construction costs or a maximum of $15,000 per upper story residential unit. This ordinance also directs the Director of Planning to administer the program and grants authority to the Urban Renewal and Community Development Agency to oversee the allocation of up to $60,000.
Second.
Any discussion? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending the ordinance number 2014-5-8136 entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the Kentucky Office of Highway Safety for the Heads Up Don't Be Intoxicated Mini Grant Program. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance is being amended to increase the amount of the Heads Up Don't Be Intoxicated Mini Grant Award to the City of Paducah, Kentucky from the Office of Highway Safety from $21,000 to $24,000.
Second.
And I think, isn't Chief Barnhill doing a presentation tomorrow at Rotary on this?
Yes, he is.
It's a good program. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. We'll go to our ordinances introduction, so we do not vote on any of these tonight. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a service agreement with Motorola for fiscal year 2014-2015. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a service agreement with Motorola for yearly maintenance of this 800 MHZ radio controllers, individual department radios, Paducah-McCracken County 911 dispatch consoles, telephones, and other related radio equipment in the amount of $52,583.52. This contract shall expire June 30, 2015.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I will let you know Brent could not be here tonight, and this is just the annual service agreement that comes up.
Okay. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the Finance Director to make payment to Kentucky Waterways Alliance Kentucky Aquatic Resources Fund in order to comply with the terms and conditions associated with the Riverfront Development Project Biological Opinion issued by the United States Department of the Interior Fish and Wildlife Service Kentucky Ecological Service Field Office. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The Finance Director of the City of Paducah is hereby authorized to pay to Kentucky Waterways Alliance Kentucky Aquatic Resources Fund the amount of $135,706 to comply with the terms and conditions associated with the Riverfront Development Project Biological Opinion issued by the United States Department of the Interior Fish and Wildlife Service Kentucky Ecological Services Field Office.
Second.
Mayor, Commissioner, this is actually, I guess, a requirement, as Commissioner Gault read, with our Riverfront Development Project. There is a good news in this, and the fact of that is, our original location, the value was $399,050. And by moving it downstream and getting it away from the mussels, we reduced that cost to $136,000 for that. I don't know if you all realize it or not, but I actually included the entire document and the biological opinion for your weekend reading. I'm sure you all read it cover to cover for that. That gave an explanation of the entire thing. But the breakdown of those monies were given in that, $20,000 for some monitoring, of which the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, through that organization, will do their own monitoring and satisfy themselves about the mussel development over time with our project. Land that was, I guess, in lieu of fee, of about $77,000 of that. And then also, the propagation of mussels that were estimated to be lost, of which comes to that grand total of $136,000 and some change. This will fulfill Paducah the permitee with the, I guess, environmental portion of the project, and that's just a matter of finalizing the construction. I'm tickled to death that we didn't have to pay for a while, but how do we dodge paying? This thing was decided in October of 2012. How do we dodge paying it all this time? Were they just slowing billing us? I'm just... Actually, we wanted to get this behind us and out of the way. Of course, we've been, there's been a lot of discussion with regards to the project. So we'll get this behind us, so you don't get where somebody's running an audit or something on your permit later and down the road, and they say, hey, we haven't got our money from Paducah for this here. But we did save 22 months, which was great. We get to get our money 22 months. Yeah, great. You know, as Shannon one time said, you know, I guess it may be cold comfort, but I did look up the Kentucky Waterway Alliance and something called KARF, K-A-R-F. You know, you can say that, you know, it's sort of cold comfort maybe for some, but it does talk about that they do well and restoration, conservation project, watershed conservation throughout the state of Kentucky. These monies go back, these monies actually go back into the basin, the Ohio River Basin. They need to be spent within the Ohio River Basin region. It does stay here. Yeah. Goes back into the environment to, again, to improve areas that have been lost.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Rhodes, please.
All right. From mussels to dumpsters. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of dumpsters, lids, and fittings for FY 2014-2015 for utilization by the commercial businesses within the City of Paducah and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah, Kentucky, authorizes the Finance Director to pay the amount not to exceed $70,000 for fiscal year 2014 through 2015 to Municipal Equipment Incorporated for the purchase of various sized dumpsters, lids, and additional fittings for the Solid Waste Division of Engineering Public Works.
Second.
Taking my...
Is this now what we spend every year, Rick?
Yeah. Taking my city engineer's hat off and putting my public works director's hat on, again, you have essentially 800 commercial customers in the city that use our dumpsters anywhere from a two, four, six, or eight-yard dumpster. This just replenishes dumpsters that need to be. They run anywhere from $600 to $800 apiece. Some of them we refurb, and some of them we just scrap. So where we have customers that they just get wore out, we have to replace them. So it's just a replacement program. So to get, there are no trade-ins. This isn't like cars. Trade-in is a scrapyard. Scrap by, hey, trade-in.
So how long does a dumpster last?
Depends on the user, like a high-end restaurant user that has a lot of, I guess, food product and a lot of liquid.
Basically eat the bottom out?
It eats them up pretty quick. But if it's mostly dry...
Food from the restaurant.
Yeah, yeah. There's...
Eat the bottom out of a...
Well, it's, it's, it's...
Moisture.
There's a lot of biology there going on, Commissioner. When you mix water with a lot of food product, there's a lot of biology going on that is, it gets after the metal. But, yeah. Is that why you've got a cast iron stomach?
I've got a garden.
That's, that's, that's good.
Okay. Thank you, Rick. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance ratifying the mayor's execution of a 2014-2015 Kentucky Governor's Highway Safety Program reimbursement grant award with the Kentucky Office of Highway Safety, a division of the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby ratifies the mayor's execution of a 2014-2015 Kentucky Governor's Highway Safety Program reimbursement grant award with the Kentucky Office of Highway Safety, a division of the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, in the amount of $39,770 for overtime hours associated with saturation patrol, including fuel costs. This program does not require any local cash or in-kind match.
Second.
Assistant Chief, how are you? Assistant Chief, how are you?
I'm well. How are you?
Good.
Mayor Commission, I guess the best part of that is no local match. It will be for selective traffic enforcement in the high collision areas. We'll pay for the overtime rate and fuel for the police cars for a whole year.
Okay, good deal. Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that the board of commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance ratifying and approving the mayor's execution of 2000, of the 2014-2015 Kentucky Governor's Highway Safety Program reimbursement grant award with the Kentucky Office of Highway Safety, a division of the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. This ordinance is summarized as follows: That the city of Paducah hereby ratifies and approves the mayor's execution of a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto for 2014-2015 Kentucky Governor's Highway Safety Program reimbursement grant award with the Kentucky's Office of Highway Safety, a division of the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, in the amount of $40,000 for the support of the Heads Up Don't Be Intoxicated program for 12 months, beginning in October 2014, and to implement a distracted driving prevention program. This grant award does not require any local cash or in-kind match.
Second.
Another excellent grant. This is actually snowballing, and we've received requests from the entire region. Captain Hodgson, before he retired, and Officer Morgan went down to IPTM, which is in Jacksonville, Florida, and taught a class. And out of that class, we've received numerous requests. Even Jacksonville, Florida wants us to come speak to their entire high school classes. So it is a program that will save lives, and I expect it to receive some national recognition.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that the board of commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the city, commission of the city of Paducah, Kentucky, authorizing a waiver and consent by real property owner among the city of Paducah, Kentucky, the county of McCracken, McCracken, Kentucky, and Wells Fargo Bank National Association with respect to personal property of Genova Products Incorporated, located at the leased premises commonly known as 5400 Commerce Drive, Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows: This ordinance authorizes the city of Paducah, Kentucky, the city, to approve a waiver and consent by real property owner among the city of Paducah, Kentucky, the city, the county of McCracken County, Kentucky, county, and Wells Fargo Bank National Association lender, in order for Genova Products Incorporated tenant to obtain a loan from lender to finance a purchase of equipment for tenants' facilities at 5400 Commerce Drive, Paducah, Kentucky. The ordinance approves the form of the waiver and consent presented to the board of commissioners of the city. With such changes therein, they shall not be adverse to the city and may be approved by the mayor and city manager.
Need a second? Second. Any discussion? All right.
And you get to read through pages of legalese and-
City managers' report. I'm sorry, Alan, I just cut you off.
That's all right.
The biggest thing I want, I want to say, and it's just on behalf of the staff and recognizing the work of Cindy Medford. She actually was a trailblazer as far as city department heads are concerned. She was the first true risk manager. I don't have any dollar figures in front of me, but I wish I did, about the monies that I'm working with Kentucky League of Cities and, and other things, that she has saved the city in dollars spent by making us a safer place to work and live. She put up with some old heads and treated us kindly and tapped us gently to get us to move towards a safer environment in the city. And she saved us a smile every day for us, and I'm very pleased to have called her my colleague and friend.
Well said.
You know, some, sometimes when you hire really smart, bright people, they just don't stay forever. Sorry.
It's true. But some do.
And some do. Sometimes they don't.
Well said, Mayor.
I wasn't denigrating anybody.
But that's it, that's gentle. Thank you.
I mean, I think all of our department heads do an amazing job.
Absolutely.
Keep the city running smoothly, keep us out of trouble. What else do they do?
That's good. Right there. That's-
Getting you out of trouble is a pretty good job.
We hope we deliver services to the citizens.
And Tammy, Tammy does a great job of keeping us out of trouble.
I don't know about that. I try.
Any comments tonight?
It was a great day in Paducah. It was beautiful and-
Wasn't it?
Folks was in a great mood and, you know, waving you over in the lane, come on over, you know. That's always. I did get a, an email from Jeff today regarding the, a couple of weeks ago, when we talked about the, the murals and, and who could work on what, and I got a, I think every, I think we all did. I got it late this afternoon, so I haven't a chance to, to read the opinion. But after going through that, if there's any questions about that, I'm sure I'll bring it up. Wanted to thank him for that. And Miss Stacy Blankenship, we're getting that out there. So if there's any more questions about it after we get into it and look at it, we'll bring it.
Okay.
I believe Robert Dafford was in town today painting.
Yes, he was.
Did I see him?
He was up on the wall.
He was here for Jeff Speck's talk also. Met him there that night. So he's been here a few days.
And over the weekend, Mayor, I believe I saw a picture of you and the chief in a parade.
Yes, and Commissioner Abraham was there.
Yeah.
Rhodes was there.
Yeah, a friend of mine, dad passed away, and the funeral was at 11 o'clock. And he had, the family asked if I would sing at the funeral, and I was like, yeah. So they graciously moved me up. I didn't ask to be moved up. They just, so I pulled in right behind the fire truck. So it was, it was, it was, it was a nice, it was a nice day. It was hot. It is, and it looked like it was going to rain, but it didn't. But yeah, it was, it was a great weekend. Ran into a bunch of old guys that I hadn't seen forever. And, you know, we traded stories. It's amazing how those stories enhance themselves over the years. So it was, it was a great emancipation celebration, I thought.
And Commissioner Rhodes, you had a car. Who did you take in your car? Because they wanted me to ride with-
Judy Calhoun called me and said, quick, Alan, do you have a car, convertible? I said, of course I got a convertible. And she said, and I said, I'll be there in five minutes. And, and then Judy got to be the, sort of the, I'm not sure what, but she was her, she was coming home from Bethesda because they moved away, and so they said, okay, you kind of do be the MC. And so I too got to go up front.
There you go.
Because I was carrying the MC.
That's it.
All right.
Nice time.
Well, I hope everybody has a great week. Meeting's adjourned.
We know we do. We have an executive-
Executive session.
We have an executive session.
Oh, I didn't know that. No one tell me.
I haven't, Mayor. I'd be more than happy to read it.
Okay, Commissioner.
Failed again.
I move that the board go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topic: A specific proposal by a business entity where public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize the location, retention, expansion, or upgrading of a business entity as permitted by KRS 61.8101G.
Second. Okay, so we will not be taking any action. No meetings adjourned.
No, I'd like to call the roll.
Okay, please. I told you she keeps us out of trouble.
Commissioner Abraham? Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Now we can adjourn.
It's because he's not here.